Thank you.
One more.
I know.
You can give the vice chairman two votes.
I don't know much, but I know that's not true. I don't know much, but that's not true.
You know, they need to come out. This makes no sense. We are waiting for a call room. Okay. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, the next several items are required public hearings to implement board direction on the development of the FY25 budgets. The items are presented this time of year and have to do with a requirement under Florida statutes to utilize or to utilize the uniform method of collection for non-advalorem assessments. Item number 21 requests the board to conduct the first and only public hearing on the adoption of the fire rescue assessment rule for all 482 properties being assessed for the first time and certification of the entire rule to the tax collector. Madam Chair, we have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion for staff recommendation.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Item 22.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 22, as required by Florida statutes, requests the board to conduct the first and only public hearing on the adoption of the assessment rule for all 371 properties being assessed for the first time and certification of the entire assessment rule for the stormwater management to the tax collector, and we have no speakers on this item.
Madam Chair, I move option one, staff recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of option one, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I vote aye. Hearing none, it passes. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 23 requests the board to conduct the first and only public hearing on the adoption of the solid waste disposal services assessment for all 336 properties being assessed for the first time and the certification of the entire assessment rule to the tax collector. We have no speakers on this item.
Thank you. Commissioners, the staff recommendation is option one. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye with Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 24 is the first and only public hearing to approve a resolution imposing a non-advalorem assessment for the purposes of collecting the sewer service usage charges or readiness-to-serv charges on certain real property located in the Bell Air Anna Wood area and the certification of the entire rule to the tax collector. We have no speakers on this item.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move options one and two, staff recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. All those in favor, well, is there any discussion? Commissioner O'Keefe?
Just making sure everyone's awake.
Just making sure.
Just making sure everyone's awake.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous with Commissioner Maddox and Proctor out of chambers. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, pursuant to an interlocal agreement with the city of Tallahassee for the provision of sewer services to Klaran Lake subdivision, this item requests the board to conduct the first and only public hearing to approve a resolution imposing the non-advalorem assessments for the purposes of collecting sewer service readiness-to-serv charges on certain real property located in Klaran Lake's plantations, subdivisions, unit one and two, and a resolution adopting the non-advalorem assessment role and certification of the entire assessment role to the tax collector. Commissioners, again, pursuant to the interlocal agreement, the county is responsible to collect and remit to the city the full amount of the readiness-to-serv charge through the non-advalorem assessment on the annual property tax bill for those properties. With that, commissioners, we do have one speaker on this, and one speaker on, thank you. Speaker in attendance, Francis Nicholas?
Thank you, Commissioners. My opposition to any increase coincides with my previous objections to this discriminatory taxation imposed upon residents, especially since it only applies to Klaran Lake's units one and two. The taxes on, excuse me, the residents who remain on septic systems also takes place, and those who have this woefully obsolete low-pressure pump system receiving inadequate service. For example, when the power is lost in this area, homes with this low-pressure pump system have only limited tank retention. This can result in a backup of sewage, and trust me, the power is lost in our area several times a year. To justify this increase from less than $200 to an outrageous 1.5% increase to almost $450, Leon County should be required to install an updated regular sanitary system with manholes, the ability to be cleaned and maintained properly. The current sewer system does not deserve a sewer readiness tax. On several occasions, since the installation of this inadequate low-pressure pump system, which has to have been at least 30 to 50 years ago, it is still not ready to serve taxpayers properly. In all, this discriminatory taxation, I believe, should cease to exist. I'm sort of certain that the increase has already been decided, but thank you very much for considering my objections.
Thank you.
And Commissioners, I believe we have one speaker on Zoom. I can't, I'm not sure if it's Jessica Simajati or if it's Elaine, okay, I'm sorry, Elaine Crumbout, Crumhout.
Crumhout, yes.
Thank you for that.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
All right. Yes, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to present my logic and objections. First, I'd like to say that the neighborhoods that this imposition covers are highly fluid. There are a lot of homes that are sold and resold, and in the process, I bought this home, which is a vacation home. Well, I'm a grandmother, so from December to April, I'm in Tallahassee to be a grandmother to my grandsons. I'm only there for those couple of months. I do have a septic tank. I was completely unaware that there even was a sewer system available to the neighborhood, and it was not until I called the county that I found out that in my taxes, I was already paying what was basically $175, $179 a year to maintain a system from which I gained no benefit. So you can imagine that I was obviously surprised and disappointed to receive a letter which had no letterhead and had no information other than there was going to be a $444.12 assessment, and there is no indication that I would have service. I have never been offered service. I have never asked for service. I have a perfectly functional sewer septic tank. I'm a little muddled as to why we are assessed at all. Further, I am entirely surprised and disappointed at the timing of this massive increase. The taxes on that little tiny property are already excessive, and my guess is that this nice, middle-class neighborhood, which has lots of police and fire personnel in it, are going to have difficulties coming up with that massive an increase in their already large property tax bill. I find the timing not justifiable. I find it insensitive to citizens, and I think truly it should be reconsidered. If this is a mandate, which I suspect it is, I think it can be a mandate that is implemented not this year, when everyone is having his budget stretched the way they are. Further, I would like to know, have a real county statement regarding what it costs to hook up to the system, whether or not this $444 will contribute to that cost, or is just a maintenance fee for something I don't have. There is a great deal of information not available to the property owners, and we need answers on these things before you decide that you support an assessment, the timing of which and the actual benefit of which has really no application that is logical currently. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That concludes your speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Maddox?
I'm going to defer to the district commissioner on this, but what I wanted was, with your permission, Madam Chair, for items 21 through 24 to reflect my voting in the affirmative with staff recommendation, which was the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I think we had indicated with Commissioner Maddox out of chambers for those votes. Can we amend it to show his affirmative?
Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor, would you like to do the same? Would you do that? Thank you so much. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one's a difficult one for me, you guys. I cannot support this. Now, this is a squirrely situation, to say the least, and I don't know how keyed in y'all are on it, and I think this is important for both the people who are here and the people who called in and anybody who's emailed my office to understand about this. This is the city of Tallahassee's utility assessing county residents who do not live in the city. All right? The county commission has no say in this number, how much it is, why it is what it is. It is entirely by city ordinance. So the city 100% has the right to do this. It does not mean that it is the right thing to do, and so we have a conundrum on our hands, and that is, the city has decided, based on some calculation that we have not been privy to, to raise this fee 250% to $445 a year. Now, this affects two units in Klaran Lakes, 1,300 homes approximately. I think it's important for those homeowners to understand that you've been paying this fee since you've owned your home. It's been in existence for 20 years, when previous county commissions, at the request of Klaran Lakes homeowners, agreed to extend sewer service to Klaran Lakes. This is a capacity-based, ready-to-service fee that every homeowner agreed to when this was done 20 years ago, because they had really big problems with septic tanks in Klaran Lakes. I mean, like sewer flowing down the streets. All right? That's all well and good, but to hit these folks with a 250% increase in their assessment, we're going from $176 or something like that to $445 on their tax bill, is not something that I can support. My bigger concern is, why is the county the hitman for the city? Why are we facilitating the collection of a non-advalorem tax that is determined by the city's utility, that directly goes into the city's coffers? It benefits only the city. The city's utility has been a factor of this collection of money, and so I cannot support it. Now, I think it must be said, and this is something that the folks in Klaran Lakes need to understand.
Commissioner Welch, I'm sorry. I thought we had a motion and a second. We don't.
Oh, we don't?
Would you like to do a motion, or somebody else would do a motion?
I'm not ready to make a motion.
Before we get into commissioner discussion, and we have staff recommendation, options one and two are the staff recommendations, but, you know, to do it proper, we need a motion, and then we get into commission discussion.
I gotta look at the motions, Madam Chair, and see which one is to not accept it. That would be my motion.
Okay. I don't see one to not accept.
Yeah, not accept. That would be my motion.
I'll say.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Okay, go ahead.
Now, I was gonna say, for folks who live in Klaran Lakes, you don't vote in city elections. The city, if, now, again, my, actually, I want to amend my motion, Commissioner O'Keefe, if that's okay with you. I would like to make a motion that we don't accept this and that we send it back to the city and ask them to either reassess or recalculate the number they're coming up with, or collect it themselves. They have a billing department. They can bill 1,300 homeowners in Klaran Lakes if they so wish. They just want to dump it on us to make us do the bad, the dirty work, and I think the timing is suspect. I think that with all the things that we've put on the county in terms of, we've talked about property tax increase values, we've talked about Waste Pro, we've talked about fire services fees, all these things collectively, this is unbelievable, 250%. Okay, thank you. So here's the reality of that situation, though. Let's say that we send this back to the city, or we reject it outright. The cities could cut off your service. They could just say, we're not gonna do it. We're not gonna provide you service. You're in arrears. You're done, Klaran Lakes, and there's nothing we could do. The city could just sue us if we don't do this, because we have an interlocal agreement that requires us to do this to essentially facilitate the city's tax assessment. But I can't in good conscience support the item, but it's very problematic for the folks in Klaran Lakes. It's unfair for the folks in Klaran Lakes, and just as a matter of principle, I can't support it, so.
On point, Madam Chair. I believe that was option three, correct? Option three would be to not, it says do not conduct.
Option four is board direction.
Option four, yes, ma'am.
Board direction, right. Before we move on, Commissioner Welch, clarify your motion, your substitute motion.
My substitute motion would be board direction, option four, to reject this collection, send it back to the city and ask them to dial down the volume of the assessment, or, no, just to dial it down, or collect it themselves. Like, just collect it themselves. They have a mechanism for billing people. Why can't they send 1,300? They already sent 1,300 letters to every homeowner. Why can't they send a bill to 1,300 homeowners?
Okay, I just want to make sure, and it was seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe as the substitute motion. Now discussion, Commissioner Cabana. But let me do this before we do that. Can I ask the county attorney, I understand we have interlocal agreement, can you address the ramifications of the county sending it back to the city saying, you collected yourself, we're not gonna do it, in light of our interlocal agreement with the city?
Yes, if the city does not agree to collect itself, it triggers the dispute resolution provision in section six of the interlocal agreement, which means the representatives of the city and county would get together and try to resolve it informally. If that was unsuccessful, it would go to binding arbitration, and our retraitor would make a decision on whether we were obligated to collect in compliance with the interlocal agreement.
And would it be based on the language of our interlocal agreement with the city, pretty much, an interpretation of whether or not?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I didn't mean to do that. And if we lose, we pay all attorney's fees and costs.
Thank you.
Just asked.
Yes.
Yeah. Madam Attorney, so, just so I understand, if we send it back, then I'm guessing leadership from the city and county would sit down and try to talk this out. If not, then it would go to arbitration, which is what you said. If it goes to arbitration and we're found to be liable to have to implement it, then we would be liable for also the cost of arbitration? That's what you said, correct?
Yes, all of their attorney's fees and costs. That's correct.
Is there anything in the local agreement that would give us the right to not assess this non-advalorem tax?
Collect.
Is there anything in there that would give us the right not to?
Madam Chair?
Not to collect, not assess.
Not to collect, yes.
Yes, please.
No. Under section three, paragraph three, it triggered the obligation to levy, impose, and collect pursuant to the statute, a special assessment when the city exercised its right to assume responsibility and maintenance obligations associated with the system. There is no termination provision in this agreement, and there is no term. It is perpetual.
What, last, final question, Madam Chair, if you have a moment.
Please.
What recourse do these good citizens have to have a problem with this? Because I want those citizens to understand that even if we go through this whole process of sending it back and saying we're not collecting in arbitration, at the end of this, we're still gonna have to collect and we're gonna have to pay attorney's fees. What recourse do these citizens have to contest or to do anything about what the city is asking us to do? Because it looks like we don't have much. I mean, this would be something that we'd be doing that would really put us in a position to have to pay extra dollars for something that we're gonna have to do anyway. So what would be the best course of action for the citizens who don't like this, want this, agree with what we're trying to say here today?
They need to go to the city.
Okay.
The city owns the utility. I mean, our hands are tied. We have no discretion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for my own point.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Attorney. Commissioner Cabana?
Thank you. On point first with Madam Attorney, then I have a question with the county administrator. Would it be, would the city potentially be in violation with it being not maintaining the spirit of its original agreement?
I'm sorry, would we?
No, no.
The city?
I don't think I understand your question. What do you mean by spirit of the agreement?
So with some contracts, it doesn't have a term, right? It doesn't have an ending period. So by them increasing the fee by nearly 250%, could the county argue that it's unaffordable and not in the spirit of the original agreement to provide affordable sewage for Klaran Estates?
No.
No. My next question is for the county administrator, Madam Chair. So does this agreement, my concern, this is particular just to that neighborhood. Is that correct? So?
Just to that neighborhood and just one and two, units one and two.
So, you know, with sewage going to Woodville, that the city of Tallahassee will, you know, it's the city of Tallahassee sewage that's going to Woodville, those fees are, are those set by the city?
Yes, entirely.
What protection do we have in place for unincorporated area to protect our rural Leon County that has city of Tallahassee sewage?
No, the utility provider has sole discretion over the, of setting the fees for their utility, and customers can decide essentially if they want to connect or not.
Okay, I think that's something that we need to be, I think that's something that we should communicate more efficiently to rural Leon County as we go through and obviously encourage folks to move from septic tanks to sewage, that we don't set that rate. There's very little that we can do to protect them from that rate, and my fear is, you know, Commissioner Proctor, we have sewage coming to Woodville. We've put a lot of messaging behind encouraging folks to go from septic tanks to sewage, and, you know, I'm a little concerned that there's no protections in place for rural Leon County, and, you know, I don't want the same thing that's happening now to happen to Woodville. So just, you know, food for thought as time transpires, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cabana, Commissioner Proctor?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, Madam Attorney, if you look at section seven indemnification clause under attachment three, and I read that a little bit differently, in particular the last sentence there, with respect to challenges and expenses and costs being assessed to the county, it seems that the language is clear that we would not have that outcome you suggested.
Chair?
Yes, please.
If I may respond. So if you look under section eight, general provisions, specifically paragraph 11, costs and attorney's fees, in the event of litigation between the parties to construe or enforce the terms of this agreement or otherwise arising out of this agreement, the prevailing party in such litigation shall be entitled to recover from the other party its reasonable costs and attorney's fees incurred in maintaining or defending subject litigation. The term litigation shall include appellate proceedings. That's the attorney's fees and cost provision. Then the indemnification provision applies, if we get sued by somebody who doesn't like the rates, the city has to step in and indemnify us, because all we're doing is collecting and passing the money over to the city. So that indemnification provision, it's triggered, if we get sued, the city has to indemnify us. That's the difference.
When Commissioner Maddox asked, what's the best outcome, it seems to me the best outcome is for the county to get sued, and once the county is sued, we're indemnified, and then we drag and join the city as part of that suit and let them duke it out through that way, and then let the city pay for that cost. So it's really best for the, because when you look under section seven indemnification, further, the city agrees to indemnify, defend, and hold harmless to county, its officials, officers, employees, from and against all suits, liabilities, damages, costs, and expenses resulting from or arising out of any and all challenges to any special assessment imposed pursuant to section three hearing. So I think the best outcome is for folk to sue the city. I wanted to lift up some concerns that, I don't know who brought it up, but under section seven, attachment three of interlocal agreement, it says that the city may levy a customer charge or readiness-to-serv charge for all properties in Klaran Lakes plantation subdivision units one, two, from the time that the city accepts ownership of the sewage collection system and when the service first becomes available to properties located within the franchise area. So Chairman Cliff Thell and City Mayor John Marks accepted this provision that the city could levy this particular charge, which they are doing now, but it's interesting that within two years of the city will waive the TAP fee for all residents that connect to the sewer system during the first two years that the system is in operation. TAP fees in effect at the time will be charged for all residents connecting after that time period has elapsed. So is this timely? Is this not? Is it in the two-year window? I don't know, but these folk may not have to pay anything. Otherwise, verse five, the city, "System charges shall be paid by all resident that connect to the system," and it seems that the clause that get out of this, if it's in the first two-year window. Is this the two-year window, Madam Attorney?
Commissioner Proctor, this has been in place, and we've been imposing this assessment since 2007, so no, it's not within the two years.
So has the city accepted the ownership of the seven? Has the city accepts the ownership of the sewage collection system, and if they have, how is that indicated?
They accepted it years ago.
Right.
They've been operating and maintaining it, yes, for many, many years.
Okay. So this is from my best reading, that best reading, that the city has agreed, and we've accepted, Cliff Thell accepted, our chairman then, he accepted that the city could levy a customer charge or readiness-to-serv charge. But to your point, unless the county attorney has some other information, there is nothing here that says how this would be operationalized, and if, as our fire services fee, if we would be that scapegoat and use our tentacles and leverage, we just figure that the county would do this business for us. But I don't see the city having the powers and authority to levy a customer charge or readiness-to-serv charge. There's no mechanism described as to how they would collect that, and certainly there's nothing that designates us to be the collector of monies sent to the city. Currently, and what gives me great pause, is the $11.4 million, which we levy as a fire service fee, and we collect it and we give it to the city to cover fire services in the county, unincorporated area. The city transfers about $11.7 million of the fire service money to its general. The city transfers about $11.7 million of the fire service money to its general operating budget. So in effect, the monies that the city transfers to its general operating budget is the monies that us, the little brothers, we go out and collect, and they take that whole amount and put it for their general operation. The question is, are we being, are we the suckers, as you mentioned, Commissioner, to do the same thing? And will this money, how will this money go to other parts of the city's operating? But is that our responsibility to care? Ours is simply to raise the money, to seize the money, and to give it to them, but we have no other voice beyond that. You will be curious to know, and you were right in your description of the flooding situation and what really equity that binds our hands. Vince, I think your awareness is keener than maybe the county's attorney, but that the county, did we not give the permits for the building of the homes in Kalaran Lakes back in the day?
Is that a question?
That's the question, County Administrator.
Madam Attorney?
No, to the county administrator.
And I'm sorry about that. Commissioner Proctor, what was the question, please?
The question is, the equity issue here is if the county commission, the county, I'm sorry, commission, but the county gave the permits for the building of the homes in Kalaran Lakes way back in the day?
Yes, we permitted those units.
That is a dynamic in why our hands are held somewhat to this, because homeowners came to us when the description you gave, when that flood, massive flood, Lake ammonia flooded, all kinds of water, sewers, stuff backfired, it was just a mess out there. But the county gave permit in a flood zone, in an area that it should not have been. So equitably speaking, right for right, was that we thus recognized that we had done that permitting and that water level, that lake level, we allowed that to occur. So our hands were somewhat, we were relieved that, Vince, I forget what that system that we initially put in there before the city put sewer and came out to the rescue, if you will. I can't remember the word, but we had some kind of pumpy, little intermediate step to relieve that situation. What was that?
We, the people are, as they are currently, they had septic tanks, and what we built is the current system that's in place, which the city took over.
All right. So in effect, Commissioners, I don't, you know, it's hard not to get a chance to oppose the city on something, but it was a city that came to the rescue of Kalaran Lakes. It was a city that agreed, stepped up.
The county, the county. He said, "We, the county built it." The county came to the rescue.
The county stepped, but the county could not or would not, we needed the city to come and do the rest, the heavier lifting, I think. Was ours not an intermediate step, so to speak?
So this may help clarify a little bit. So again, yes, we built the system, about $5 million worth of the system. And since we do not run a utility, the city of Tallahassee agreed to run the utility based on terms and conditions, as we do with every agreement, that were acceptable to the county and memorialized in the interlocal agreement. One of those conditions is that we collect a readiness to serve fee. We collect a readiness to serve fee on every sewer system in town that we have in the unincorporated area. On your previous item, you approved one for Bel Air Annerwood, the same thing. And so again, if the, and the reason that we collect it is if the city, if these folks lived in the city of Tallahassee, they could collect those charges on people who were not customers of the utility on their tax bills, because they would be paying a city tax bill. They do not do that. They pay a county tax bill, and so that's the methodology to collect this on a county tax bill. And that's why the city imposes that, and we agreed to it.
But one final comment, Madam Chair. We built that first step sewer system. We should have done that. It was our responsibility to do because we permitted houses in an area which the hydrology and all the pressures of the lake and all of those things should have spoke to our engineers and whoever those experts are, should have known. So inasmuch as we were willing to permit that area, we stepped up to the plate and we bought our way out to resolve and reconcile that people bought homes where septic tanks didn't work. So city came to rescue, and in this instance, I would support the measure, recognizing its history and recognizing that us, the county, this thing should never even been built, in my guess, to make sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Let me say this too, before I go to Commissioner Maddox, what Commissioner Cabana, Minor, then, Welch. Because in the analysis that we have, it clearly indicated that since 2007, the city has not raised the rates at all. The rates have been flat every year. So this is the first time that the rates have been raised. Now, during the period, Mr. County Administrator, when the rates were not raised, was the county, the city obligated to give an analysis or explain how that was divvied up between the residents in that area? Or are they required now to give the county an explanation of why the rate has gone up from $179 to $444?
Yeah, Madam Chair. No, the city's rate making is entirely under the purview of the city of Tallahassee. This is simply a collection methodology that we use to utilize the tax bill for collection.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox.
Madam Chair, we had a lot of discussion, I think, but the one major point that I think has been brought up here today is the fact that all we do is merely collect. Ma'am, first and foremost, let me, I hope you understand some of the conversations going on up here in that though we are the collectors, by virtue of the, by virtue of the agreement that we have with the city, we have to collect. And if we don't collect, then we can go to the table, but what the county attorney has told us is that there is nothing in our interlocal agreement that gives us the right not to collect. So on the back end of that, you'll still be charged, the fee will still have to collect, but then also we'll have to pay attorney's fees for ourselves and the city for even going as far as trying to arbitrate. And so I think what Commissioner Proctor said in that the best route is, Commissioners, our hands are kind of tied here. I think we have to move forward with what we're supposed to do here, and Commissioner Proctor said it. You can then, by the way, ma'am, and the other speaker who came by Zoom, if you like, you can sue us, and then the city has to deal with that. But right now, I don't, I don't see, I don't see where we, where we benefit ourselves by not doing what we did, what we have in our interlocal agreement to do that we're going to have to do on the back end, no matter what happens. So as much as I agree with some of the things that you had to say, Commissioner Welch, and some of the sentiments that you have and the way that you feel, I think I'm going to have to go with supporting staff recommendation and allowing those citizens that really, that, well, I'll say this, I'm glad we had the conversation, because I think now, ma'am, you have a better understanding of where we play in this game, where the city plays in this game. We can't change anything. We have no jurisdiction over what, on what they want to implement. We're simply just a collecting structure for it. So really, that conversation's with the city, not with us, but we have to do what we have to do here. So I'm going to, I'm going to make a substitute motion for staff recommendation. I'm going to, I'm going to recommend, ma'am, that you have a conversation with, a conversation with the city, understanding that our hands are really tied and how much we can do here to implement or change anything when it comes to those rates.
Commissioner Maddox, before we get a second, let me, because I think-
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I appreciate everybody's conversation. I'm going to withdraw my motion, because it is a difficult situation for us. What I really wanted to do was to illuminate this situation, which is, and I will not support the staff recommendation out of principle, but I do not, obviously, I don't want the county to get sued. I don't want the folks in Kalaran Lakes to lose their ability to tap into this sewer. But I think it is, I think that we should, at some point, before we do this again, we need to perhaps look at the interlocal agreement, find a way to not be the hitman delivering the bad news on behalf of the city to unincorporate areas, because like Commissioner Cabana says, only going to eventually happen out there. And the city hasn't, requires no justification, as we just heard. They could charge these people $5,000 if they wanted to and just go, huh? You got to deal with it, because these people don't live in the city, they can't vote in the city. So it's like, it's a really tough situation, and I think that it's responsible for us to have the conversation. There is no question that Kalaran Lakes has benefited from having sewer service out there. And 20 years ago, the situation with my predecessor, Mr. Grippa, and you guys, and Commissioner Proctor, whoever's up here, you know, that was a, that was a good work of public service. But this collection mechanism is problematic, because it puts us in a position of having to collect money that we have no ability to determine how much it is and where it goes or how it's spent or what it's used for, anything. And that's a real problem. So I will, I'm going to withdraw my motion, and you can, we can vote on staff recommendation. But I do think this is something, and Commissioner Maddox is better at this than me, what, maybe we can find, I don't know why the city can't just bill people directly. I mean, they have the mechanism to do that. Just send them a bill and go, this is your assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Do you want to do your motion, Commissioner Maddox?
So I think I do have a motion. I think it may kind of get us in the right vein here. First thing, I do want to say too, real quick-
Okay, we need a motion in a second.
Okay, option, a staff recommendation, but I would like for a, I don't know if I want a status report or a, because I want an understanding of the interlocal agreement. So the folks that are here can understand how we got there and what it is. And Vince, I don't know if I need to do that in a, in a, in a agenda item where we look at it, or a status report, that you could send us the details of it. And then, by the way, I tell you what, give me a status report, Vince, and that, that gives us the history and the background of interlocal agreement. And in the next meeting that we have, any Commissioners want to pull that and then take it to the level of an agenda item, we can do it that way. So the motion on the floor is for staff recommendation, the status report to come back looking at detailing the interlocal agreement plus the history of it, given the ability for Commissioners that may want to revisit that to bring it back as an agenda item at our next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Minor?
And another comment I was going to make is that, you know, I think it was either the county administrator or, I think it was county administrator, brought up the point, we literally just did this in an agenda item before this in '24 to a neighborhood that's on the south side of Tallahassee that did not have a representative here to speak. And because of those folks, because you, ma'am, you came in here and you voiced your opinion, and that good speaker that was on Zoom came in here and had something to say about it, we're having a long conversation about how we do things in an interlocal agreement. And I will say that because you did that, not just a Kalaran Lakes neighborhood benefits or has, we have a conversation based on that, but also that south side Bel Air community will also get the beneficial, benefit of us having that conversation and looking at interlocal agreement. So I want to thank you, ma'am, for coming forth and having that conversation with us and voicing your opinion on how it's going. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Maddox, would you accept a friendly amendment to this? In our agenda materials, it talks about how the increase is, the new price that's being levied by the city is similar to other charges in the other unincorporated areas. So Commissioner Maddox, would you accept a friendly amendment that a section of that status report includes, I don't need the assessment for every single neighborhood in the unincorporated area that has city utilities, but just a good, a better sense, a better breakdown of what some of the other charges are in some of the unincorporated areas?
I'll accept that.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. And now is the second, is there a second to the friendly amendment?
He was the second.
You did second it, Commissioner, okay, awesome. Did you hear that, a comparison? Okay, great, great. Commissioner Cabana and Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to, I'm going to support the motion, but I want to say, come back to a point I discussed earlier about, you know, Commissioner Maddox, you brought a good point about the south side and how we did not bring this up. So I was just speaking with the county administrator about this, but we have over $100 million, Mr. Administrator, of investment going down on the south side of Leon County for sewage. And a concern of mine is that we are laying out, the county, right, is laying out that investment. And we have a large portion of our unincorporated community that is going to sign up, and we are encouraging to sign up for sewage for the city of Tallahassee. And we don't have an agreement in place currently for rates. I would like for us to be proactive, so 20 years, 10 years from now, five years from now, whether we're up here or not, there's protections in place for folks in Woodville on the south side, so that way they don't have, you know, they don't have the representation to set the rate. So I think this is the right time now for us to look at, to get in negotiations with the city, to have some kind of, some sort of rate protection so that sewage rates can't go up 250% for folks in unincorporated Leon County. Commissioner Proctor, now, these are constituents of the south side that we both, we share, and not everyone, but there's a large handful of folks that have lower income down there. And I just want to make sure that, you know, they're protected whether we're sitting up here one day or not. So Commissioner Maddox, you know, I don't know if, I was going to ask you to include into your motion, and part of your motion, to have, you know, I don't know if that's the correct way to carry, to carry that conversation forward.
Well, let me ask the county administrator, we said a comparison of rates. Could that be inclusive of what you all are going to bring back at our next meeting, Mr. County Administrator? Or do we need to amend it or have a separate motion?
I think, again, we, I think we could get the direction here to bring back, there's a couple of different things going on. I'm not going to try to split hairs at all, but, and this is where people like Brenton Charles could jump up. We've got certain areas of town that are being retrofitted, right? We're going in and we're doing those sewer to, the septic to sewer conversion. So we're going in, we're doing the work, we're spending lots of money. People are, again, are getting a very good deal, there's no connection fees, there's no septic abandonment fees, which, it's great. We're celebrating that, that's good. Eventually, we have to turn that over to the provider, who's the city, to operate those services. And we do that, again, the way we have done that, under agreements like this. And again, I think based on your direction, what we could do, and the county attorney can chime in, is, again, try to negotiate, if it's agreeable with the city of Tallahassee, any future agreements, could, we could try to get into, again, rate protections or constraints or any of those things, and Chastity, please help me out. The other thing is that there's part of that system too, where citizens would just become customers. In those cases where the distribution lines are built and there's proximity to, in those cases where people would just tap in and they would just become customers, I don't know enough about the full system build-out to know. But, but again, I think, and I'll ask Chastity to help, to help me, on future agreements that come to the board, again, it would ultimately be the decision of the utility provider to agree to anything related to rates, but it may be something that, based on your direction, we could contemplate in future agreements. But, Chastity, I'll defer to you.
Madam Chair.
Please, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So there are a couple of things I think that we need to understand, and part of it is related to some of the questions and comments that we've received from constituents who don't underst, who are not connected, do not receive sewer service, but they're being assessed, not a tax, it's a special assessment. And there's a test for that, which makes it not a tax. But the point is, it's called a readiness to serve charge. It's not a gallonage charge, so that, you know, gallonage is based on the amount of water you consume, okay? That's a portion of your utility bill. But the other piece is the readiness to serve charge, which means the infrastructure is there and the utility provider is maintaining that system so that it is ready for, to serve your lot, your property, when you need it. So Kalaran Lakes, some of those residents already are hooked up. They receive a direct bill for gallonage from the city already, but we agreed to impose and assess and collect and give the city the readiness to serve charge. That's the only piece that we are obligated under this interlocal agreement to collect and give to the city. But that's why, even though people aren't hooked up to the system, they're still being imposed this charge, because the service is there for when their property needs it, because the day their septic system fails, and it could be tomorrow, it could be 30 years from now. years from now, they are going to be required to hook up to that system, okay? This also does not address the additional charge from where their infrastructure is along the right of way or wherever and what they're going to need in infrastructure to hook up to their house. That's going to be the responsibility of those property owners. So that two-year timeframe where the city agreed to waive that fee for that infrastructure to be put in place, that's what that provision in the interlocal agreement talked about. That timeframe is long gone. So all of those residents, when they go to hook up to that central sewer system going forward, are going to pay that additional cost as well, unless there's some grant program or the city, you know, works out a deal with them or whatever. But these are all components of how utilities charge for rates and the different fees that go into that. Now, they're all set though, but let's be clear, utility fees have to be uniform. You cannot charge this group over here one fee and this group over here unless there's a reason to do so. You have to be able to justify that. So when we talk about going back and negotiating protections for utility fees going forward, that's what you're going to hear from the city, is they have to treat all of their customers the same in terms of their rates in the unincorporated area because the unincorporated gets charged differently than the incorporated area does and that's statutorily permissible.
Madam Chair, on point.
Yes, please.
So follow-up question for Madam Attorney. So the readiness to serve, so county lays out the infrastructure, so theoretically, let's say there was a termination on the contract in Kalarne Estates. Could a different vendor come in since we laid it out and they're just basically using our pipes we put in the ground? Could another vendor come in and service that community?
Madam Chair, may I answer that?
Please.
It's no longer our system. We conveyed ownership to the city. We constructed it and then we conveyed ownership. We own none of that infrastructure anymore.
Okay, so that is the same theoretical game plan that we're doing in Woodville,
We are constructing the system and then turning it over. The city will own it because it has a utility system.
So what I'm saying as a board right now, our point of leverage ends the second that we give it over to the city. So when the deal is signed, we're hands off. We have no ability to represent the utility for our customers in unincorporated Leon County. So what I'm saying is right now, we, we have not turned over the sewage, right? And I want, I just want to make, because we're still putting it in the ground and Woodville is what I'm talking, is what I'm referencing. So once the city takes it over, yes, they do come up with their own rate, but they are essentially privy to that. And I want to make, I just want to make sure that folks on the South Side of Woodville, that we have proper protections in place because right now we are advocating for them to switch over from septic tanks to sewage. And right now it's affordable, but I want to make sure five, 10 years, 15 years down the road, it's still affordable. So I'm not saying we don't need to have this conversation right now, but I do want it to be something that we keep on our radar moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Madder. Let me ask you this, Madam Attorney. Since we're talking about utilities and regulations, wouldn't that fall under the Public Service Commission as well?
Statutorily, it's a municipal utility.
It's municipal, okay.
They're subject to different regulations. They're, for the most part, not subject to the PSC's jurisdiction.
But it's municipal, but then they have the responsibility as far as equitable billing, I guess you're saying?
Correct, that's right.
Okay. And that would be overarching, I would imagine, over and beyond what we as a commission could do as far as an agreement with them to make sure rates for citizens in unincorporated Leon County are reasonable and not overarching, in other words.
Yeah, I mean, so, so just like we impose our fees to defray the cost of the services we provide, the county or the city is supposed to do that with its utility. They have the authority under state law to set their rates. There are limitations on their rates to the extent they have to be equitable and they have to be uniform for their different types of customers. But Commissioner Caban is correct, their rates are their rates. Once they set those rates, whatever those are, we have no jurisdiction or ability and they will change over time. They will never go down. I mean, there's never a fee or an assessment or a tax that ever goes down. These will only ever increase. I mean, and we're seeing the difference from what was established in 2007 for Kalarne Lakes Units 1 and 2 and what they're imposing now. I mean.
And just one real short follow-up question. So it's discretionary as far as the city as to why between 2007 and 2024, they didn't raise the rates at all? Or they could have raised them every two years or every three years at their discretion, but right now they decided to raise the rates some 10, 15, whatever, years later? So that's just discretionary with that entity? Is that pretty much how it works?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Maddox.
Madam Chair, Kalarne Lakes is a collision between economics, geography, and sociology. The economics and what was called development growth, development developers, was a strong era of expansion to the North Side. It was probably the, growth was exponentially exploding in this era. Property values were up. Perhaps maybe the county capitulated to the strength of developers who were moving in a direction with all haste. That's economics. We did not toe the line and stop developers and development in Kalarne Lakes, which some of those areas should not have been, looking in the rearview mirror. The geography of the area was not set to be that kind of neighborhood. And when we had that heavy rain flood out there, we saw that septic simply would not work in the area. And then sociology kicks in. But for who those people are collectively, neither the county nor the city likely would have come rushing to the rescue, but because those are very good citizens of Leon County, the county rescued them in spite of our flaws and we should have because we permitted them to go there. But the city would not allow those good citizens to not get the rest of the service, to have a functional, competent sewer that was needed there. So the economics of that moment, the geography that was not ready, and then the sociology of who the people were, they could get relieved. Now, let's talk about equity. The inequity of all of this, what pisses you straight off is nobody has come to get the South Side. We can't get pipes down there. But one event triggered this. This room was full of people. County got to do something. County got to, it was hell up in here. But the city heard too, and the echo reverberated down the street and there was a union and we could go out there based on who the people were. But based on who the people ain't, we can't get the same pipes. But rest assured, county attorney is right about the rates. The rates got to be set. Municipal rates are going to be the same. Electric charges in 1994, I raised the public question, are electric rates the same in the South end of this community as in other areas? Because homes that are, hmm, 4,000, 3,000 square feet pay the same thing as people down on the South Side with 800, 900 square feet, even trailers. But we were told the rates were all the same. Now, to be clear, this is the language we need under Section 4, responsible for city, Madam Attorney. All city policy standards, procedures, regulations, rates, fees, and charges for sewer services shall be the same inside and outside cities' corporate limits. We need that language right there. But to hold these rates down has been the quest in the hope of this commissioner, we need a citizens' utility review board. We need that in place because when you go up 250%, who did that come from? City follows him up. The citizens' utility review board doesn't exist. So if you don't have the PSC, the Public Service Commission, you have a regulatory body on rates. But everything outside of municipality has to make a rate request through the Public Service Commission, has to be approved, goes through a whole lot of mathematics. Folks who can, you know, do a lot of functions and alphabets and math numbers together, they look at that to a kid. I believe, and I'm asking county attorney, can we put language that caps increases in sewer in here? Even if we say no more than 5%, no greater than 5% per annum, because we typically, you know, 5%, our county employees are getting to 5%. We don't see much past 5% around here. And remember, I can't remember that word, but that word in the, that we voted, the cap property increases to 3% per annum in Florida, can't go beyond 3%. What would you call that thing? Homesit? Save our homes, that's that word. That word right there. Save our home. Save our sewers. Save, is that right, the word? You think that word? Save our sewer? Yeah. There you go, SOS. Save our sewer and we'll cap that. And I'd like to see in that question, that we bring that back. That is very, very important. I'll pull up right there, Madam Attorney, I'm getting to feel like I'm in 19, I mean 2005 or somewhere back there.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I'll have the county attorney, if you respond.
We could say we want that in an agreement and I'm fairly confident the city will say no, and we will not have an agreement.
Thank you.
The Bible says, ask, seek, knock. Let's follow the Bible.
But we can discuss that, I think, when the agenda item comes back, right, Mr. County Administrator? Okay, right now, commissioners on the floor, we have a motion for option 1 and 2 with directions for the agenda item to come back. We thoroughly discussed it. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
No.
With Commissioner Welch voting no, I vote aye. Thank you so much, commissioners. Mr. County Administrator, number 26.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 26 seeks the board's approval to conduct, or the board to conduct the first and only public hearing to consider adopting a proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 16 of the Leon County Code of Laws to add Article 6 related to parking. The county is authorized under Florida law to adopt an ordinance permitting angled parking on its roads. We have no speakers on this item and we are recommending option 1.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners?
Move staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Maddox, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition here? None. Number 27, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 27, commissioners, is an item requesting the board to conduct the first and only TEFRA public hearing to adopt a resolution to authorize the refunding of certain Orange Avenue County Health Facilities Authority revenue bonds related to part of, related in part rather to the benefit of Westminster Oaks in Leon County pursuant to IRS rules. The TEFRA hearings are required to be held by local government prior to the issuance of eligible tax exempt debt by nonprofit organizations. This item does not have a fiscal impact on the county as no Leon County revenue or assets were used to secure this debt. With that, we're recommending option 1 and I know, and there is a speaker available representing, I believe, Westminster, if the board should have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. The staff is recommending option 1.
Move staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch, is there a second? Commissioner Maddox, any discussion? It's no fiscal impact on the county. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you so much. Anything further, Mr. County Administrator?
No, Madam Chair, I believe that puts you back on item 19.
Thank you so much. When we recessed, we were on item 19 and we had several speakers yet to be recognized. So we'll move back to our, to our speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have five speaker cards left. Nancy Stevens to be followed by John Outland. Nancy Stevens to be followed by John Outland. Okay. Calling John Outland. John Outland. Nancy Richards. I know we've lost some folks. Gene Jones, there we go.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Gene Jones. I'm president of the Arundel Homeowners Association and I'd just like to respectfully request, I'll make it short and sweet, that you've heard the community provide their input and their advice in terms of recommendations. We strongly encourage you to also select option 3 on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. What homeowners association did you indicate?
Arundel Homeowners Association.
Oh, Arundel.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our speakers. Commissioners, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Welch.
Madam Chair, I believe we might have someone, Madam Chair, I believe we might have someone who was out of the room when we called them?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Nancy Stevens?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name's Nancy Stevens and I'm the president of the North Florida Backcountry Horsemen. On Friday, I sent all of you an email regarding our position on this McKisskey Greenway issue. At that time, what we asked was for you to take no action on the staff report and instead appoint a work group composed of staff, commission members, user groups, and affected neighborhoods. And we outlined what we thought that they should be tasked with, creating a special protection corridor for only the 6.6 miles of the combined McKisskey Greenway Canopy Road, which would allow for special traffic and aesthetic character considerations in the area, considering more alternatives for moving traffic than the proposed road crossings to McKisskey Greenway and their proposed McKisskey Road intersections, considering more alternatives for maintaining the current character of McKisskey Road and the McKisskey Greenway along the 6.6 miles while accommodating new traffic patterns, considering the downstream effects of new McKisskey Road crossings on the McKisskey Greenway users and their trail crossings by pedestrians, bicyclists, and equestrians, and then reporting those recommendations back to the full commission. I think what we have here is theory that's been presented and it's not actually jiving with the practical impacts. Having citizen participation three years ago is not current enough. I think that the group, the advisory council that is working now on the management plan has had some more current information and I don't think that you can have enough public participation in this process. So our, our hope is that the character is maintained and the safety for all the users is maintained. So that's our recommendation. We hope that you agree with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, recalling Nancy Richards? John Outland? Okay, Madam Chair, that concludes your speakers.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Proctor, I wanted to give deference to Commissioner Welch.
And I will too.
His district, so I'll, I'll recognize my vice chair and then we'll.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. And then, I'm sorry, we lost.
And then, I'm sorry, we lost a lot of folks with the late hour. You know, this is a difficult situation, as I outlined at the last stop, all right, when we had this discussion at length. We're being put in a very difficult situation here because we have professional staff, people who are actually engineers and, you know, road builders and planners and designers and environmental permiters and people that do this literally for a profession, who are telling us everything is fine. And then we have members of constituent groups who are convinced that's not the case. And so, and even the messaging even is a little bit confusing. We've received quite a few emails, and there are still, I would say 50% of those emails say, "Don't build roads." We don't have that option. These are legal entitlements to these roads. All right? So the narrative, I feel like there's confusion, there's dissonance in what we're talking about. People think we don't, we can't build the roads. We have no option. These are entitlements that were in place before this land was sold to the state. The state entrusts us to manage it. We manage it very well, and we have to operate within laws, codes, and development permitting processes, and all of these things. And so, it's very frustrating and difficult when folks are telling us, "Well, this isn't adequate." And Artie White's going, "It's more than adequate. It's the most adequate thing you've ever seen in your life." So we look at, you know.
Point of order, ma'am chair. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'm sorry.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Oh.
No, there's not. I was kind of trying to lay the groundwork for that.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. We do need a motion on the floor, and then we can, we'll go back to you.
Move option two, Madam Chair.
There is a motion to move option?
Option two.
Okay.
Motion of option number two.
Okay, is there a second? For purposes of discussion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mann. Thank you, Commissioner Welch.
All right, so we look at all this information. People say they feel like they haven't had any input, they want a working group. We have statutory limitations on how fast we have to turn these things around, right? There's been years, decades of input into how this is going to happen. We've known since we've owned the property, or since the state transferred management of the property to us, that this is going to happen. So it's, I don't know if there's like a consistency in what the expectation is. So it's very difficult. So I think there are legitimate concerns that have been raised, all right? Outside of, "We can't build the road." We have no choice in that. So what can we do? Where can we find some successes? Where can we find some accommodation? Where can we find some common ground? That's what I'm trying to look for here. But when I look at ad hoc focus groups formed in 2018, consisting of all these different interest groups, those have been, I mean, I've sat in at Westminster Oaks with those folks who have had tons of input into that roundabout design on that road and have no problems with it. So it's only been relatively in the last six months that I've even heard any of this, these problems that we have. And we want to build ramps and bridges and all these things. That, those things are very, very problematic, they're expensive, they create all these problems. So here's my suggestion. I cannot support the motion on the table. I would make a motion, and again, this is me trying to find some balance here.
A substitute motion.
A substitute motion for option one, but to include in instructions for Artie and the planning staff that we minimize the lane widths to 10 feet, which has been requested, that we lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour, that we allow for an equestrian push-button signal at whatever intersections that we designate for crossing, right? That's away from the road, that's, you know, elevated, so if you're on a horse, you can hit the button. And then instead of a flashing beacon, do what we do on Meridian Road at Forest Meadows, and have a stoplight. So if people want to cross the elevated, it's already going to be an elevated crosswalk, is my understanding, right? You can stop the traffic and cross the road.
Second.
That would be my suggestion. Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe, my substitute motion. I feel like that provides, I'm sorry, I feel like that provides a reasonable balance. And this is, of course, we still have three other roads that we know are entitled to be built in the future. This kind of sets a precedent for the expectation for what we want there in terms of maximizing pedestrian safety, in light, balancing that in light of professional engineers who go, "Look, these are roads built to F-dot standards, they exceed F-dot standards, we have 100-foot buffers from the center line of the road." These are, I think, fair compromises. So that would be my substitute motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner O'Keefe. Before further discussion, let me just make sure we've got the parameters of the substitute motion.
Sure.
We're gonna minimize the roadway to 10 feet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Reduce the speed limit to 25 miles per hour. We have a push-button.
Signal for equestrian crossing.
Push-button signal for equestrian crossing, and then have a stoplight.
Well, full red beacon.
Yeah, like you can push it and it.
Like a red traffic light.
That people will come to a full stop.
Or it's pedestrian-activated, right?
Oh, okay. All right. And then a stoplight.
No, that would be like.
That's the same thing.
Yeah, it'd be a pedestrian-activated stoppage of traffic, so people could cross like they have at Meridian right there at Forest Meadows. Are you familiar with that, Madam Chair?
Uh huh.
It's a, it's, it stops traffic.
Okay.
It's brutal, but it stops traffic.
So that push-button, equestrian crossing, and stoplight is all the same thing, right?
Two different things. Two different things. So the equestrian stoppage would be further off the road.
Okay.
Elevated, so somebody on a horseback could push it.
Okay.
And not get near the road to push it.
Awesome. And then we have the stoplight.
To try and facilitate easier pedestrian crossing.
Absolutely. And safety as well.
And we're minimizing the lane width to, I think that was Mr. Draper's suggestion.
Okay. I wanted to make sure we understood the substitute motion. Commissioner O'Keefe, and then Commissioner Maddox.
Madam Chair, and Commissioner Welch, love it. I love it. I would love nothing more than to prevent these four road easements from going through, and as deep as I've looked, they're solid, they're rock-solid, as far as there's nothing we can do. But my intention of moving to bring this item back from the last meeting was to look at traffic safety improvements, and from the report we've got, and my discussions with council, we don't have a lot of, I would love to make a park road classification that extends to future roads and things like that, but that's not necessarily within our purview in a state where FDOT does the road requirements. But this, specific to this, it hits the speed limit, it takes the specific recommendations from people who know what they're talking about, and it doesn't, no offense to the people who'd want to be on a task force, it doesn't waste everybody's time with a task force when we already know what people are asking for. And so, I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Maddox?
Madam Chair, I want to give the district forecommissioner kudos and say masterful in your way of dealing with this. I'm not sure, I'm sure you didn't get everything you wanted, Rob, right? You say something? But you got, but what you were able to do, and I say this all the time, in situations like this, where it's a hard situation you got to deal with, if there's a little bit of discomfort on both sides, where you give some, but you try to give as much as you can there to make the constituents comfortable, but also try to respect the fact that we are where we are to deal with this, this is textbook. So I wanted to just take the opportunity to tell you that I appreciate what you put together for your constituents that had a problem with this. And I know you guys aren't totally happy with what happened here today, but what he did was that he actually took the time to try to take the things that you guys wanted in consideration and add some over the end to give you some of what you wanted. So I'll support the motion on the floor, and I appreciate you dealing with this the way you dealt with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, or Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. You know, Commissioner Welch, you should look at my notes right now because you've kind of taken up a lot of my talking points. And you just went right forward, too. I was going to ask questions, kind of build up to it, but you just went straight forward, and I think it's a great, a great motion, I'm going to support it. If I could, Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind, could I ask Mr. Artie White a couple of questions? Hey, Artie. So I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the actual Dempsey Road extension is about 0.2 miles, is that right? Roughly?
I think that's about right, yes.
Okay. And then I read somewhere, I don't know if it's in the agenda item, read a lot of different material, but I think there was a, there was an estimate of about 7,500 trips, average trips per day. Is that, is that correct?
I have to defer to public works on that, I'm not fully sure.
About right?
Yes.
That's about right.
All right, thanks, Charles.
Projected trip value.
Thanks, Charles, I appreciate it. So if you do the average, it's about five vehicles a minute, and that's, that's not an accurate real-life number because that's an average, right? You're not going to have cars coming through that rate at 1:00 AM in the morning. But it shows you that if it's 7,500 trips a day, you're going to have five cars on average a minute. It's going to be much higher during the daytime. So what that means to me is that this is going to be a pretty heavily trafficked road. Now, I want to thank our planning department, DSON, and I want to thank, I want to thank the developer for going above what's the minimum requirement, working with us, working with Artie's team to go above what the minimum standards were. But I really wholeheartedly support Commissioner Welch's motion here because I'm not a traffic planner, but my common sense tells me that this is a potentially hazard road that's going to be built in the future. Again, I defer to experts often because they went to school to study urban planning, I did not. But again, my gut tells me that this is going to be a potentially hazardous road, where people are going to get hurt. And so, I think what Commissioner Welch has proposed is solid. I think that helps us get to a point where it's going to be a safer road for us to use. The whole issue here is just, is, I'll be very honest, it's very sad. Because the more you look at the issue, and I know Commissioner O'Keefe mentioned this, those four easements are entitlements. We can't get around that. This amazing community treasure that we've enjoyed, that my family's enjoyed, of just one linear greenway, uninterrupted, is not going to stay that way. And we're going to have four cuts going through that at some point in the future. That was designed that way when the state of Florida bought that land and when they chose to lease it to Leon County for management. So we, it was never going to be pristine in perpetuity. And that's just, frankly, it's just sad. But what we can do is we could do the best thing we can on making sure that those crossings that do go through the greenway are going to be safe for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for equestrians. And we also try to do whatever we can to try to maintain the character of the greenway as much as possible. Is it going to be the same? No, sadly. But again, we have, we don't have the legal authority to prevent that easement from being put into place. We do have some say, I believe, in how that easement is built. And so, I think we're doing that tonight. I want to thank Commissioner Welch for making that motion, because I do think it gets us closer to where we need to be. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Minor. And let me just say this, too. I appreciate the constituents for coming tonight, taking the time to send us the emails, taking the time to come and speak to us tonight about this very important issue because you all know it's close proximity to WT Moore School, our children, our most precious, important product. And I think I'm probably very unique to the situation because I travel Mikkasuki Road where this proposed roundabout down Fleishman, at the Fleishman Roundabout, at least, I travel it at least four or five times per day, going and coming. I live right across the street from the greenway, raise my son and my nephews and nieces visiting the greenway. So certainly, I feel like I have a vested interest in making sure that it's safe and making sure that we get it right. So I want to thank my county commissioner, my vice chair, Brian Welch, for his recommendation on how we can move this forward, but do it after listening to you all in a compromising manner. I was studying this, praying over it, trying to determine how we could reach a compromise that would satisfy some of our concerns. And of course, you know, you're never going to be in a situation where everybody is satisfied. But I believe what he has recommended, which I will support, is a compromise, and after listening to the citizens and those that frequent the greenway two or three times per week, if not more often, I believe it addresses a lot of the concerns. So I want to thank staff, Mr. White and his staff, for listening to you all as well. And so, I think you recognize that we, as the commission, certainly value your input. We represent the citizens of Leon County, and I think this shows that we clearly have care and concern about the health, safety, and welfare, as well as the preservation of our greenway and our canopy roads, which, like I say, I travel every day, two or three times, five, six times per day. So having said that, if there's no other comments, oh, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate your comments. What's that street in front of the gate where the library?
Edenfield.
Pedrick?
Oh, Pedrick.
Yeah.
Right.
What is the correlation of Pedrick Road hydrology? The water won't go down, the water just will not decrease. Stayed across the road forever, Tallahassee dried up, but that spot is wet. Is there a correlation between Pedrick Road and some of the comments we've heard about the greenway, and will it get worse?
I'll let the county administrator respond to that.
Yes, in fact, let me go ahead and get either Charles or Brent up to talk about that.
Brent, I'm just concerned about what I laid eyeballs on with Pedrick Road, it stayed underwater, other areas were clear, dry. Pedrick Road would not decrease, the water's still exceptionally high. Correlation between that and this greenway and comments that we've heard all along about a potential flooding?
Yes, sir. The greenway flows down underneath Mikkasuki Road, through Edenfield, through Lafayette Oaks, and actually ultimately to Pedrick Pond. So where the greenway drains, it lands in Pedrick Pond.
Will this worsen and make worse that road and what we see underwater?
He's slow, Carl. I don't understand what you mean.
Will what we're agreeing to tonight, the development of these roads, make that flooding worse?
No, no, that road's in a different basin over there.
I'm sorry?
That road, the Dempsey Mayo Extension's in a different basin. It doesn't drain, it does not.
There's no relationship between this greenway and that?
Right. Because where the flooding is, is on the other side of the canopy, where Dempsey Mayo Extension is a little further to the west.
Potentially, where will we see new flooding?
We shouldn't see any because of stormwater improvements made for this development, for the roadway.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Before he's, let me just follow up, and then I'll let you complete. On the greenway and on the side of Mikkasuki, right across from the greenway, if you go down Edenfield, the water has been standing in those ditches. I know we've got pipes that are running in there, but how does that, is the potential to slow the water drainage down so it won't have any adverse effects on residents in Lafayette Oaks by that back gate?
Eventually, that water will stop flowing. This is still taking water from the storm event that happened two months ago where the greenways flooded. We had to make some improvements through our drainage, we crossed the gas transmission line, where it goes underneath Edenfield, along Limoges. We'd make some improvements there so the water was held up, but now we've got it released where it's been flowing, actually, for over a month now.
So do we have a pretty good guesstimate of when the water will be totally drained off of the greenway?
At first, I thought 21 days, but then we got, you know, two good rains, and actually, Pedrick Pond came back up 12 inches during those rain events. We're hoping another 14 or so days, depending on the weather. Obviously, every time it rains, it just sets us right back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've been looking at the same stagnation of water over that area. Wanted to ask, making the motion, I thought Ms. Stevens' letter to us, Commissioners, July 5th, and her comments A through D. Before I go there, county attorney or county administrator, are we under any deadlines? Are we under any absolute drop-dead dates that we've got to meet someone's expectations in terms of agreeing and coming to some understanding tonight? What deadlines are we facing?
About the greenway?
Yes.
Madam Chair, okay. So you're talking, there are timeframes.
So you're talking, there are timeframes for permit approvals. Some are statutory, statutes say 120 days once a permit application is submitted. We have shortened that timeframe substantially in our land development code to 20 days. So within 20 working days after submission of a complete standard form application, basically the county has to determine that the application is approved, is approved with conditions, is denied, or does not contain sufficient information to meet the requirements. And they have to notify the applicant as soon as they can after they've made that determination. If the county fails to act within that 20-day timeframe, the application is deemed approved due to extent as in compliance with the requirements, unless there's an effective stop work order or on the site on application where down zoning is pending. So we are under very strict timeframes to approve permits once a permit application is submitted.
All right. Is there, has the clock triggered? Is there an application that's been filed that would foster the beginning of a ticking clock?
For this particular roadway, it is my understanding that is a no. It's pending action by the developer.
So we don't have anything specific that's ticking, but we're, I guess, anticipating the developer. And one of the reasons that we were on the other issue so long about Killarney Lakes is because we have tended to be very much influenced by developers. And our haste to accommodate developers sometimes has not been prudent. The ask tonight, if I might summarize, is that this group has access, and I'm not saying that they've not had access, but the request coming from Ms. Stevens, and I like hers because it was most clear, is that these points, A, B, C, and D, and because we don't have a, an application, and I think that we ought not to give deference to a speculative applicant when there are voices and living citizens here asking a little bit more access. I'd like to ask if points A, B, C, and D could be given a 10, 15-day window because if the applicant applies in the morning, they have 20 days or so. Could we take 15 days to allow consideration of these points that we received in this letter from Ms. Stevens?
Commissioner Proctor, point of clarification, you're pointing to A, B, C, and D, is in the agenda item?
It's in the Nancy Stevens' letter.
It's in the, does everybody have a copy of it?
Y'all get a copy of Ms. Stevens?
I don't have it on my desk.
Okay. I only got this copy from Ms. Stevens, I asked her when I heard her read those terms. But I'd like to ask for...
Let me just ask the county attorney, we've got, had a motion, now we've got a substitute motion. Do I need to dispense with the substitute motion or have it withdrawn?
I'm asking it to be an addendum.
An addendum to the substitute motion? Okay. Okay, awesome.
To give a work group 15 days to hammer out the final, final. And we don't have any clock ticking at all right now. And I want to make sure we max out every consideration that we can to this large group of citizens who's here before we bow and acquiesce to some speculative developer. Can we respect the 50 people that we saw and who are asking, begging for a chance still to talk a little further before we just kiss somebody's ring? That's my ask. I'm asking if we can accommodate.
Add that to your motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
He's requesting that it be added.
No, Commissioner Proctor, I would, do not want to add that to my motion. I think that the motion is fair and it is a compromise. And I think that the folks who have an interest have had access to our staff, they will continue to have access to our staff. And I think those particular points, applying special classifications and corridors, that can't be done in 15 days. And so it's not a speculative developer. We know who the developer is. That developer is acquiring right of way right now and could be submitting an application at any point in time. And so, again, all of those considerations were, were considered, all of those requests were considered. I feel like the motion that's on the floor that has been seconded is a compromise, a fair product, that addresses specifically safety concerns on the quarter mile of distance through the corridor in terms of slowing, I mean, essentially, the, the compromises are the bulk of the requests that were made. So respectfully, sir, no, I would not like to add that.
Okay, this is the substitute motion that you have on the table?
Yes, sir, it's the substitute motion that's on the table.
Okay. Well, in final comments on the substitute motion, commissioners, this is a, an opportunity. And I think, and I mean, I'm not arguing against the Commissioner Welch's opinion of his motion, that it's sound. I won't argue against his own assessment of his motion, nor will I argue against your thoughts about the soundness of his motion. My ask is simply that we would afford the work group concept one more opportunity. And if we can meld their thoughts and create a harmonizing essence to what's going to be lost forever and always, then let's do it. I mean, I, I respect the word developer because I know that's new utility bills and they're going to make money, property values go up when you hit the word developer, all like that. Simultaneously, I hear this word about the character of an area. And I think that we really ought to not throw, throw character away in the face of developer. I talked about the developer pressures, extraordinary influence of the northern growth back in those years that we did some cockeyed Killarney Lakes 1 and 2 units, but that was development pressure. I'm, I, I respect developers, but I ain't kissing no rings on nobody. Don't matter. These people have invested what is their homes, it may be 200,000, maybe 400,000 homes, developers trying to do $40 million project. That, I can't disrespect their, their life investment. You said you raised your son in an area, your nephews and all in an area. They want to see that replicated in their lives. And to the extent that we maximize and give them access to their voices, at least the buy-in, Commissioner Maddox, is a little bit more harmonious. These people don't feel like they got ran their way because the developer ran up to the county commission and county commission ran with the developer and we, we boxed out the citizens' voices. That's the point I'm making. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I think we have thoroughly discussed this particular item. I'm going to call it, call the substitute motion for a vote. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition?
Aye.
Okay. One opposition, Commissioner Proctor. But the motion passes. Thank, thank you, Commissioner, commissioners. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item, item number 20, commissioners, very quickly, seeks the full board consideration of appointment of one citizen to the Affordable Housing Committee, the reappointment of a citizen, and the appointment of two citizens to the Big Ben Health Council, and the reappointment of two citizens to the Educational Facilities Authority. Those options are represented in options 1, 2, and 3 before you commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. We don't have any public speakers?
Not on this item.
On that item. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept.
Madam Chair, I'd move option 1, 2, and 3.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Is there a second, Commissioner Maddox, second? Thank you so much. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, unanimous. Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one speaker under citizens to be heard on non-agenda items, Dr. Sandra Allen.
Dr. Allen, thank you.
I'd like to say good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good to be here with you all. I apologize that I was not here earlier to speak on the notice to property owners of non-advalorian assessment. I just want to express a little bit of my concern about this. In the, I received a letter dated June 14, 2024. Didn't have an opportunity to respond because I was without utilities for several days. Truck backed into my utility line and broke my utility, so I had no utility. So I wasn't able to respond via email to this, this notice. But the, the section in here in the letter that says the assessment will appear on your annual tax notice because billing efforts, billing efforts previously made to collect the assessment have been unsuccessful or because you have voluntarily opted to utilize the tax bill for payment. My payments were sent in, I had payments to go in. Not sure in the, in the mailing process of how things have become a little bit confused in the mailing, but the city have received my assessment fees and, but they still processed this to go to the tax. And my concern is that the clause in this letter that says failure to pay the assessment will cause a tax certificate to be issued against the property, which may result in loss of title. Now, that part right there is concerning for me. So the issue between the, between the city and the county of what I have spent most of the day on the phone dealing with, with this, is that the county will say that they can't see the bills. They don't know what the assessments, they can't see how much is being charged. And on the city side is that they're saying that they, we're not sure if we've received the bills or we receive the bill, we don't, it, so there's just this confusion between the city and the county on this payment. So I ask that you revisit this because there is some confusion between sending in payments and the payments being put to where they need to go in a timely fashion. So I, I've had, this property has been in my family for a long time, and I don't, I don't want to see an assessment put on it because it, it appears to be a tax, it appears to be a tax on your, on your record, and I, I prefer to pay accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner O'Keefe? And that was our only public speaker?
It was.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, could I ask that someone with staff get with the speaker to see if they can make sure they take a look at it?
That's what I was just going to offer. Rashonda Bradley back there in the green, she, she'll be available to meet with Dr. Allen on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, commissioners, we have staff recommendation. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
We on item number 20. Oh, we already?
We voted aye. I think the county administrator's up on deck.
She just came. Oh, I see.
County Attorney.
Okay. I apologize. I apologize.
The roof, the roof, the roof is on fire. The roof is on fire.
Okay, does anybody, I'm going to go to the county attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one item for the board. We have received an update from our outside counsel for the opioid litigation. Apparently Kroger has agreed to settle in specific jurisdictions, including, well, potentially Florida. Florida has not agreed to enter into that settlement with Kroger, but they could at any time. So in potential anticipation, conditioned upon Florida agreeing to enter into that settlement agreement with Kroger, I'm asking for authorization from the board to participate in that settlement. If Florida, again, agrees to participate in that settlement, the issue with trying to bring them back later is we're not meeting until September. And usually when these go, they go fast and they want an answer like right away, which is why I'm asking for your approval now, conditioned on whether or not Florida agrees to engage with the settlement.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
I move that we give the county attorney what she asked for?
Second.
Thank you. Give you the authority. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Is there anything else?
Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator?
No, that was so easy, I was trying to think if there was something I should ask for. But no, there's not. I have nothing, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Maddox?
Madam Chair, I would like to ask for a proclamation for Ms. Stevens. Joseph Woody, born 7/30/1919, is a World War II veteran. I'd like that. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by, excuse me, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to make motion for proclamation, recognizing Bishop Lamar Simmons, elected to consecrate in June...
As a bishop of the Life Center Fellowship Church?
Commissioners?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? It was moved by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner O'Keefe.
No, it wasn't. I can move my own proclamation. I ain't no chair.
You can move your own?
Yeah.
Do you want to withdraw your?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Madam Chair, I'd like for us to bring back, county administrator to bring back an ordinance, looking at the puppy mill issue that was brought up earlier by the young lady, if we could have an agenda item looking at other ordinances that are in the state, those 85 ordinances that's across the state, and we can bring it for our consideration.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Commissioner O'Keefe's motion, who's Commissioner Caban, second.
Do you mind if I make a comment or two?
Yes, sir.
Discussion, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I love bringing that up. I thank you for doing that, thank you for the second. I actually want to thank the rep from the U.S. Humane Society, and I actually had to hand out all the list of other ordinances, but the county attorney has it. I'm excited about this opportunity. I think that it protects local reputable breeders, and I think it's the right thing to do, so thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. County Administrator, you okay with that? Okay. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Madam Chair, finally, I, I, I've had a conversation about the shipping container transitional housing program that the young lady brought up earlier that's going on in Atlanta and other, other parts of the country. I think what I want to do there is ask for an agenda item coming back, looking at transitional housing for those who are homeless or looking for housing, to explore what, to look at what different things people are doing across the state, including the shipping container idea. I, I do know, first of all, let me make that motion first.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I do, I do know that we have shipped dollars and other things that, that we spend specifically on affordable housing. I don't, I, Commissioner Proctor spoke earlier to transitional housing specifically for those who are coming out of incarceration. We do not have, and I think the federal, the federal, federal dollars went away a long time ago looking at transitional housing for those folks who are homelessness or homeless or looking for, looking for housing, are in transition of housing, right? That aren't ex-felons and people who come from incarceration. So I, I guess what I'm looking for here is just different ideas on how we may be able to get into more transitional housing here in Leon County and what people, other people are doing across the state, including the idea of looking at the shipping container, shipping container possibilities that other people are looking into. Now, I do know that with the shipping containers, I've, I've had conversations, they said that, you know, HUD doesn't recognize it as being safe, but, and there's not a lot of dollars out there for transitional housing when it comes to HUD dollars and other dollars specifically. And so I just want to know, you know, just, just so we can have a good conversation around what transitional housing looks like in other jurisdictions and what... what transitional housing looks like in other jurisdictions and what they're doing to fund it, because I know there's not a lot of federal nor state dollars out there for it. So that's, that's all I'm asking for.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor, Mr. County Administrator, you give it then. Okay, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you. Finally, July 12th is the birthday of my mother. She will turn, don't get me wrong, I think she turned 71. And so what she has asked for, and I'm going to let the world know, she said, you know, I usually give her nice flowers, you know, little edible arrangement. She's going to Vegas and she wants me to give her money to gamble with. So I'll be, so Ma, I will be sending you a few dollars to Los Angeles in Vegas and want to wish her a very happy birthday here on the air. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Commissioner Maddox, I think your mom already won the lottery, man, when she had you.
Get out of order.
Yeah, she, she, she's in North Carolina, so you know, you know how that works.
I'm teasing you. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Tell your mom happy birthday. Her birthday is two days before mine, three days before mine, July 15th.
Birthday to you, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you, thank you. Okay, Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I only have one, one item remaining and that is, so I'll come around to it, is we had, recently it was out at chairs where we have the sand pit and where we had the train accident, where a train hit one of our trucks and actually before it hit another truck, luckily no one was injured. What that brought to my intention is that, for example, that intersection has a sign that says it's a railroad cross, well, it used to before the truck was hit, but there's no light warning. There's nothing saying a tra, not even a, not armed, but not even a light saying a train is on its way. And so we also saw that from photos sent in from constituents, I want to be clear, I did not go near these rail tracks that are not our property, I was sent photos by constituents that show, in particular, the berm from that area crossing over Lake Lafayette and Alfred Arms, we saw parts of it wash away right up, like the dirt and things walk away, washed away from under the railroad. Public work staff has been great educating me on this, but, and a lot of this is a railroad responsibility, but I think what I'm asking, I'm moving for an agenda item to come back with the report on overall railroad safety in our community, particularly identifying the number of railroad intersections that do not have a lit train approaching warning. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Discussion, I thought state law required that, Madam Chair, that we.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I thought that state law already required the designation of a, of a train crossing. Federal law requires that a noise be made by the train, a signal, da, da, da. I'm shocked that that's not in place. And if so, county attorney, isn't it required to have signalization of train crossings?
I am not sure, but I'm happy to look at that and ensure it's included in the agenda item that's going to come back.
Okay.
Thank you. All those in favor, I believe it was you moved and it was second by, who's second the most? Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor of that agenda?
May I add one, may I add one discussion? May, might, may I add a discussion for the vote?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I do want to give credit to the rail company, I can't remember the name of it. After that, there was that accident, they have since had an employee sitting in a chair under a tent out there who is being notified and is manually notifying when, when trains come through. It's not a permanent solution, but it's at least, I want to give a little credit for that, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye for the agenda item to come back on that issue.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner O'Keefe? Thank you so much. Commissioner Minner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is also related to rail. Earlier this year, the county did a tremendous job working with the, the rail company to repair a railroad crossing on Tower Road. Did a terrific job, worked with the railroad company, it's pristine now, it's very safe. There's a, another railroad crossing that I think is very hazardous, it's at Mission Road in Tharp. And for anybody that has driven along that road, it's, you have to slow down to make sure that you can actually cross the crossing, it seems. And there's one of the metal spikes that's poking up, someone's going to have a popped tire before too long. And it's just, it's a busy intersection, it, I think it's, it poses a hazard, so I'd like to ask our county administrator if he could take a look at that. I'm not, I took pictures of it and, and sent them on, but I'm not sure if it's city jurisdiction or county, but if, if the county administrator would be willing to do that, I'd appreciate it.
So is that a motion or you asked for a gen, or you just requested?
I'm happy to just to have, I mean, if the motion's not necessary, I won't make one.
I got the direction I need.
Okay, great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And then I think in prior years, you've heard me and maybe some other county commissioners talk about Waste Pro service levels. In previous years, my chief of staff, Jody Wolcoff, and I have received constant streams of, of people in unincorporated areas not having their trash picked up, or hydraulic leaks, or other things like that. I want to give credit where credit is due in terms of the improvement that we've seen from Waste Pro. In our consent agenda, we had an item about a Waste Pro status update and just really shows tremendous progress. The, the completion levels are at near 100%. We, we kind of assess service level with Waste Pro by what we call liquidated damages. It's basically a way to quantify missed pickups and that type of thing. And, and the, the amount of liquidated damages has gone down 69% since October of last year, which is just incredible, from 22,000 in October to just 2,000 in May. And that, what that shows is that Waste Pro is really doing a tremendous job. We haven't, my, my chief of staff and I have not gotten many calls for Waste Pro service lately, which is another good sign. So I just, I want to thank Waste Pro, I, I know they've, they've brought on some new equipment, they've brought on some new technology, which helps them accomplish their, their service levels, and so I just, I want to give credit where credit is due and thank, thank them for a job well done. And then last, well, second to last, I want to have just another shout out to the FEMA representatives, Quinn, Josie, Alicia, and Sarah, and the 90 other FEMA staff members who were here in Leon County helping our constituents repair damage from the tornadoes and the related storms. So just thanks to everyone from FEMA that's out there working with us and our neighbors to, to help them get back up to speed. And then lastly, I just want to thank everybody, both the county commissioners, our county administrator, county attorney, and all the Leon County staff, and everyone in Leon County. Have a great, safe rest of your summer, a good, safe break, and we'll see you next time in September. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Minner. Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First order of business, just want to say thank you all for the support on the private road assistance programs. It was a big initiative for our district, one of our number one constituent complaints coming to our office over the last few years. Another, a motion I'm about to make is in, is in regards to illegal dumping. A growing concern and another growing constituent complaint, not only have I seen, but we've had feedback from constituents is illegal dumping. You know, in my district, I have the Lake Tacon State Forest, Apalachicola National Forest, and we're getting, seeing in frequent, you know, folks just dumping loads of trash on the side of the road or in the forest. And so I move to bring back, as a general business item, our ordinance in regards to illegal dumping in Leon County.
Point of information. Were you? Second, I second the motion. Yours was a motion?
Yeah.
Did you make?
Oh, I was, I was, I thought you were about to say something, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I have a point of information.
Okay, you're okay.
Can Leon County make ordinances affecting the federal government's property? Do we have any authority to make an ordinance which speaks to, addresses federal regulated lands?
I don't know the answer to that question, but it's something that would come back in the agenda item since you've identified it. We'd have to research it and figure out what our jurisdiction is with regard to anything affecting, something like illegal dumping affecting the federal property in the forest.
Thank you. Commissioner Caban, had you finished?
Yeah, well, the motion's on the floor, so we have to vote on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have to vote on that.
Oh, okay, what was the motion?
So my motion was just bring back a, a general business agenda item on our illegal dumping policy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Hearing none, you okay, Mr. County Administrator? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Caban.
Thank you. Next thing, I was just going to say happy early birthday and hope everyone has a great, we have a two-month break, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I'd like to request that we place the NAACP National Conference back on our agenda calendar. You know, those things which we authorized to attend appear on our, our calendar. And for some years, NAACP had been on there, but it, this year's is not located on the calendar, and I'd like to ask our immediate placement of, of that.
Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Let me ask a question, Commissioner Proctor, the conference has been previously on the calendar, goes removed from the calendar?
Yes, ma'am, it was on there, the National Urban League is on there, the NAACP is there, options for us to attend, the Congressional Black Caucus is on there, and largely from years previous, the District One Commissioner, who attends the NACO, the FAT, but oftentimes the issues of District One, such as the state's most impoverished zip code, has never talked about it, FAT, never talked about it, NACO, so many issues of, of the urban community is overlooked and not on their agenda. So this board recognized that possibly we could be informed from a different agenda. The National Urban League, NAACP, National, the Congressional Black Caucus were all added as standard, standing options that we could attend for a total, comprehensive view of policies impacting all the people and communities.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Proctor, and I believe the motion on the floor is to add back to the calendar the NAACP National Conference. Commissioner Caban, you had a comment?
Is that a second? I was going to say second.
Oh, yes, it was already second, I think Commissioner O'Keefe seconded. Is there any discussion, Commissioner?
Quick questioner, I guess, about travel budgets. Is it pretty standard for like, in, in other counties for commissioners to have to seek board approval for, for travel? I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, we have office budgets and I, I feel like it's, you know, you know, we're elected county commissioners, right? I feel like it's a little odd that we would have a, we have a budget, an office budget that for us to, to, to use within our purview and then have to come to the board to seek approval for travel. I know Commissioner Miners come to the board and ask for reimbursements, I know Commissioner Proctor's come to the board now a couple times for, for, to use, to use his travel budget. You know, I feel like it's, it's kind of, you know, silly, you know, we have our, we have our own office budget, I feel like we should, we as a board should be able to use it, you know, as, as we would like, and it's up to us and our constituents to report back to them if they have an issue with our office budget. It just seems kind of weird that, you know, we have to, you know, seek approval for travel.
But I believe Commissioner Caban, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. County Administrator, we do have a list of conferences that are pre-approved that we can select to attend. Am I correct, Mr. County Administrator?
Yes, Madam Chair, I think, I think what Commissioner Caban is suggesting is should you have a policy at all relative to, once it's within your, within your budget, we'd be happy to bring the policy back. Commissioner Caban, I'm not sure if it came from audit guidance or anything like that over the years, but if, if it was the board's direction, we'd be happy to bring the policy back for your consideration.
So you're saying really not necessarily have a list, but if we can attend whatever conference within the parameters of the budget that we are provided?
Correct.
That we shouldn't have to come case by case back to the board?
Correct, like if it's, if a commissioner's using their office budget for something that isn't pertaining to county business, well, that's up to them to deal with their constituents on, does that make sense?
Okay, so your motion is for an agenda item to come back to look at that?
And we got a motion on the.
Correct, I was just, yeah, he's motion's on the floor, I was bringing it up for, like as a point of.
Oh, that's true, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my motion is to add.
To add NAACP.
To the standing list that had, once upon a time it had been there.
Okay, and yours was not a substitute motion, you were just discussing.
I was just saying, yes, ma'am, I apologize for the.
So we, we got NACO, we got the Urban League, we got the Chamber of Commerce, Milli Allen, we got Congressional Black Caucus, it's just that somewhere the NACO.
So we've got the list.
Inadvertently somewhere fell off the list.
So let's vote on the motion on the floor to add the NAACP as an approved conference, if no other discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Thank you, Commissioners, Commissioner Proctor.
Madam Chair, request, I make a motion for two resolutions, one honoring the National Football Championship Team of Florida A&amp;M University, and a second to honor the National Championship Golf Team at Florida A&amp;M University. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, for, for discussion, now I presented a proclamation to the football team at.
We did that one?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I presented the proclamation to the president of Florida A&amp;M University and to Cozy, the new football coach about maybe two months ago, so we've already, we've already done that.
Okay.
Sir?
My motion is then is for recognition of the FAMU golf team, which won its national championship.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye, thank you, Commissioner Proctor.
Madam Chair, I wanted to ask if we could bring back a review of the tow truck schedule, which we regulate by county, an ordinance that sets and caps fees. It's come to my awareness that it's been maybe 12, 13, 14 years that we've last addressed it, and tow truck industry has been asking for a review. And I would like to make the motion that we ask our county administrator to perhaps meet with that association and look at updating to upgrade their, they say that they're really wanting an upgrade.
Yet, Mr. County Administrator, if you had addressed it.
Yeah, just procedurally, I would, the way we would generally do this is we would first bring the ordinance to the board and it's, explain everything that's in it and seek your direction if you wished for there to be any changes before I went and met with anybody.
Okay, I'll make this motion to bring back our current rates when they were set in, in discussion items from the county ministry.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Commissioner Proctor, anything else?
Yes, ma'am. I know, it's, Madam Attorney, Florida has passed something that we cannot really give a damn about heat and workers' conditions of working in heat. Isn't it illegal for us to give a damn about workers in heat? Isn't that what the legislature passed?
Madam Chair, I think, yeah, we, we have policies that are currently in place that, that provide for all of the, the, the heat mitigation tactics and training and procedures throughout the county, which I don't believe conflicts with, I know the, the legislation you're, you're speaking about, Commissioner Proctor, but I don't believe that our existing policies, which are very comprehensive about heat and employees' exposure, I don't believe that those conflict with the current legislation.
We've, we've addressed this before and temperatures, heat index has been, has been extraordinary. And the legislature has preempted communities from making heat regulation. I know that we have something with regard to cold, cold weather and we've had some, some, some policy mentioning of heat, but I'm wanting to lift up for our staff, our administrator, I don't, I don't want, and I'm thinking one of these days, want our workers to die in the conditions of which, not only in, in Florida, but dogs is dying in people's cars if you stay there, your little children suffocating. We don't want our workers in any kind of excessive heat, and even though that came out, I think that we should, we should be mindful that people, only human and not machines. So I'm interested in us not, people being dehydrated and getting sick out there in the heat, so I want to put that on the table. Then finally. Then finally, Commissioners, our need for a conference center, and I know that the tourist development is gonna meet on Thursday, but the need for a conference that the Omega Sci-Fi fraternity, which Commissioner Maddox is a proud member, seeks support of their hosting of convention, is a trick here, and I'd like for us to purchase an ad in their book, the city has purchased one, TPD has purchased one, but our T, our tourist development council is not supporting their ask. Why? Because although they are the host of the state conference, Tallahassee chapter, am I right, Nick? But because there will be in excess of, we have not the facilities to host Omega Sci-Fi state regional conference, statewide conference. So it's, they're the official host of it, but the venue is Orlando, Orlando. So the fact that we, they're not putting heads directly in our bed, the tourist development council is not supporting them, but though they asked for an ad which would be placed in their literature from the county of Leon, supporting the Tallahassee chapter of Omega, I would ask that we would support, that the literature would capture their hosting county support of Omega Sci-Fi. Though the venue is in Orlando, through no fault of their own, we just don't have facilities here.
Madam Chair, if I can, I, I had previously talked to the county administrator about sponsoring the event, and because the event was not in Leon County, we could not sponsor, but Commissioner Proctor is correct. We are the host, Leon County Chi Omega Chapter is the host of the statewide event or meeting, we just don't have facilities here that would accommodate, and so we did have to move that to Orlando, and, and so I don't know what parameters we have or what kind of, what, what we're, what we're limited to there, Mr. Administrator, but if we could consider giving a full board vote, even though it's not in Leon County, but it's sponsored by a organization that's in Leon County, I'd like for us to go down that road, so given, if that's the motion.
Yeah, that's my, my motion, and I don't know what hindereth us from supporting, buying an ad to support the local chapter of Omega Sci-Fi, and they pay, they live in our county, they support our county, they pay taxes in our county, all of those things, it's just that for this three-day event, they're gonna be in Orlando because their home county does not have adequate hosting facilities.
So, Madam Chair, I would, I would second-
So Commissioner, is that your motion, and that's your second?
But I want to hear from the county attorney before I second, but, but given-
But second it for discussion, and then let's hear from the county attorney, so we'll have the motion on the floor.
I don't-
But, but, yeah, but this is it, this is commission time, so, okay, you're right.
Yeah, I don't, the only thing is, I didn't want to second if the county attorney said this is something that we can't do, so I was, I was wanting to hear from the county attorney first before I gave my second. Can I, is that, I'll second.
I think we need a second, don't we, Madam County Attorney? Not necessary, since this is commission time? Okay, please.
So I guess the only question is, you know, fundamentally, there has to be a public purpose for any expenditure of public funds, so can you articulate the public purpose for the expenditure of the funds for the conference that's being held in Orlando?
You don't have a copy of the agenda, I know generally when we have these sorority and fraternity, national conventions-
It's not, it's not national, it's a statewide meeting.
Statewide meeting.
Yeah, I mean, define public purpose.
Usually the agenda, the seminars, they're all directed to some public issue.
I mean, there are, there are, there are seminars and, and sessions that speak specifically on social action as well as voter suppression, voter, voters' rights and things of that nature, I guess that could qualify as a public purpose, but that's as far as I think it would go when it comes to public purposes, the, public purposes, purpose is those social action sessions as well as voters' rights and seminars of the same nature.
Commissioner Welch.
Just a couple of questions real quick. Do you know how much it is? The ad?
I have to, I'd like to bring it back for agenda, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, okay.
I believe the amount they're asking for is 2,500.
How much?
I think it was 2,500.
I don't know what it was, I, I just asked-
You just asked for an agenda, I got you.
So your motion is for an agenda item to come back, Commissioner Proctor, and is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't want, first of all, I, I want to support Commissioner Maddox's fraternity, I just, I don't want any of your fraternity brothers to come over to my lawn and peal out on it.
Oh, no, of course not.
But I, but I, I don't think I can support this because, think of that, the opportunity cost of that 2,500, I mean, wouldn't we, how can you, what happens if you have an organization that comes to us at the next meeting and is seeking ad space for an event they're having in Tallahassee? Why do, how do we, how do we weigh those two requests, you know, and I just, I just, I don't know that we should be in the business of, of paying ad space for organizations that, that request it. Whether it's a, a, a business that might be bringing, you know, business in here, or a Tallahassee-based organization, a nonprofit that's having an event somewhere else, I, I just, I don't think that's the best use of our taxpayer dollars, and with, with all due respect to Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Proctor and, and the fraternity, I just, I don't think taxpayers would want us to spend that money in that way. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote against the motion. If it prevails, it's fine, we'll have the agenda item come back, we can have that discussion later, and I don't mean to stir up a hornet's nest here, I just, I, I just personally don't think that's the best use of our taxpayer dollars. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All I keep thinking about is them doing, someone doing donuts in Commissioner Minor's lawn. You can come to mine, I haven't cut it in months, so you can come do those. Normally I'm fine with just bringing back an agenda item, and the only thing is, I, I kind of hear what Commissioner Minor is saying makes sense, and so I hate to vote for an agenda item that I, I can't foresee an item to come back that really articulates public purpose for locality, and, and we don't need to go on to it forever because I'm disappointed that we don't have facilities. I would love to have the state meeting here, and it's disappointing to me that we, as a community, don't have facilities, but that doesn't connect for me for sponsoring for an out-of-county event. Otherwise, I would love for it to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe, and, and I'm, I support the motion for the agenda item to come back, and, and I believe then we would have specifics about whether it's a public purpose, I don't think we even know what the amount, I think, I think Commissioner Maddox said he thinks is 2,500, it could be less, I'm, I'm not sure, but we would be more informed with an agenda item came back, and that way, right now, we're just not habitually denying it. I think that would give us an opportunity to flesh it out.
Madam Chair, I think that, at, at that time, the organization's leaders, leadership could possibly answer our questions. I could just say that when, when I've sponsored food giveaways at the fairground, that this organization has on, on those particular Saturday mornings, brought, you know, 12-year-old, 10-year-old boys, they bring them out and make them wear a certain color shirt and participate in some do-goody activity, and they spend a lot of time mentoring and all of that with boys. And certainly when we do the food giveaway, that organization, Chauncey, I don't know where your organization be, y'all don't show up, but anyway, next organization, you show up and do a good job, just saying what I'm saying.
Let, let's vote on the motion on the floor, but, so you're putting in, you got on your purple tie, so he's, he's supporting Omega Sci-Fi. Uh, Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna support the motion for an agenda item to come back, can't guarantee, I'm gonna support it when it comes back. Very eerie on the precedent we're sending, you know, my fraternity's coming back on campus, the FSU this fall, and they're gonna be asking for a lot more, 2,500 hours. So, yeah, thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Okay, all those in favor of an agenda item coming, coming back, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Nay.
With respect, no.
Two opposition, Commissioner Minor, Commissioner O'Keefe, motion refuses, thank you so much. Commissioner Proctor, do you have anything further?
My final thing, Madam Chair, is I ask not only for the Commissioner, but if the whole chamber would please join me in singing to you, your birthday coming up, is it Tuesday?
Tuesday.
If you all would join, all the baritones, join me, as we sing to our chairwoman. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you. It's like the Austrian boys choir, it was fantastic. Thank you all. Um, did, did want to again say happy birthday to Commissioner Maddox's mother as well as to our queen of the dais up here. It is a pleasure working with Mrs. Maddox's son and Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask for a couple of quick proclamations. Number one, I found out yesterday, or the day before, that Mac Kemp is retiring, or has retired, Mac Kemp. Mac is one of our EMS bosses and is also the guy who runs our Honor Flight program and has for 10 or 12 years, and Mac is a wonderful guy, and he has retired from our Leon County EMS service, so I'd like to ask for a proclamation in his recognition.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, and then this is one that Commissioner Caban may want to take up on this one, but on July 1st, Tallahassee Community College became Tallahassee State College, and so I would like to ask for a proclamation recognizing Tallahassee State College as our, our newly rebranded local college.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 And Commissioner Caban, you feel free to take that one if you want to deliver it. And that's it, Madam Chair, thank you, and you all have a great August, and I'll see you in September, and I'll be starting back school here in three weeks, so your prayers are appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch, and to follow up with Tallahassee State College, Commissioner Minor and I were at Tallahassee State College, was it last month, month before? They had a great reception, and they actually unveiled the, the emblem, and it was really nice, it, it was, it was very nice, but I understand it's, it's more official right now, so thank you for raising that, Commissioner Welch. I would like to ask for a proclamation for proclaiming September 9th as Missing Children's Day, Florida Missing Children's Day, and, and present it in our September meeting. Thank, thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I'd also like to, Mr. County Administrator, just thank you and county staff, we recently had a situation come out in my neigh, come up in my neighborhood, they related to the storm and debris, that was quite a bit of debris that was on the streets in the neighborhood, and when we called them, and the Neighborhood Association President called that same day, staff came to the neighborhood, called Waze Pro, they were just very responsive the same day, so I've just got to give kudos to, to staff, Mr. County Administrator.
Now, do we know who's you? Do we know who's your neighbor? No, I'm just kidding.
No, I don't think we-
You're welcome, thank you, they do a great job.
The caller was unidentified.
Well, perhaps, but we just got great staff, and I, I don't think, we think, I thank them enough for all that they do, and a lot that they do just goes unrecognized, so just thank you guys very, very much. And finally, I want to mention that last Friday, we had a great ceremony here at the courthouse, where we dedicated courtroom 3A in honor of Judge Hankinson, and we received a nice thank you note from the Chief Judge, Judge Almond, and I'd just like to read it this real short, but it says, Dear Chair Cummings, thank you so much for honoring us with your participation in the courtroom dedication ceremony for Judge Hankinson. It was a very special occasion, made even more special by your presence and kind words. Please pass along the court's gratitude to your colleagues on the Leon County Commission. Much regard, Chief Judge Frank Almond. So I just want to thank the county, county administrator and all the commissioners for supporting the vote to dedicate that courthouse to, that courtroom, rather, and if you go up on third floor, it's a nice plaque on the door that carries-
Picture taken.
Oh, oh, there, okay. There is a picture with Judge Sustrum and the Chief Judge and Judge Hankinson's widow, and you could probably see the, the plaque there on the door, but it was a nice, very, very nice ceremony, and I know many of you were still in Orlando at the Florida Association of County meeting, but I came back early so that I could, I could participate, but thank you guys so much. I hope everybody had a great 4th of July. We'll miss everybody next month, but we look forward to seeing everyone at our September meeting. So if there's nothing further from anyone, meeting adjourned, thank you all so much.